Officers do and street deputies do impacts everybody at the table on the back end. And I think commissioners need to see that, be aware of that, and then maybe make adjustments in budget as depending on what we what we hear today. This is the entire criminal justice system of Sedgwick County from stem to stern with with three law enforcement leaders here. I was telling Commissioner Beatty at the beginning of the meeting, if we had somebody from KDOC here, that would be the gambit. But Mr. Stonehouse is here from the our Department of Corrections and who is a direct liaison to KDOC. So from everything from street level law enforcement to the corrections component and everything in between, this is the representation of criminal justice in Sedgwick County. So I thought what we do today is go down the list here and starting with, we were gonna, we'll go a little bit out of order because Chief Sullivan's not here yet, but start off with Chief Lee, kind of giving an overview of what's going on in Derby, what he's seeing in his, and he's, Koya has a vast experience in law enforcement with Wichita for a number of years, been with Derby for 14 years. He has over 40 years in the in the business, has a vast experience of of crime and and trends. And I thought maybe he'd go over what he's seeing in Derby, let the sheriff talk about an incorporated county and some of the small cities out in the in the county. And of course, when Chief Sullivan is here, he can talk about Wichita, give an overview of crime and many, any strategies or tactics they are seeing in the future challenges. And then we'll give each of the the rest of the justice system a chance, five or 10 minutes to see what they're seeing in their areas, trends and tendencies, and you know, try to forecast what's going to happen in the future. So from our end, we can plan accordingly in a budget process. So with that, I will turn it over to Chief Lee.
Okay. And let me just mention for the public, so in the hierarchy of assigning sizes of cities in our state, there's class one, two, and three cities. And because of the population growth in Derby, Derby is now a class one city along with Wichita. So that's important that you here are here related to that rapid growth and congratulations to Derby. But thanks for being here, Chief.
All right. Thank you very much for the invitation. I appreciate it. Opportunity to join you this morning. I'll go over just a few things, and I think it's probably true for some of the other surrounding communities, the smaller ones that we see. We're fortunate in Derby that violent crime is still relatively low. With population increases that we've seen, we do see homicides occur now. We had two last year, but it's certainly not, thank God, to the numbers that contribute significantly to incarceration rates or anything of that nature. But we do see violent crime in Derby. We see sex offenses. We see all the crimes that you see anywhere else, but just on a smaller scale. So one of the things that I've noticed also is population increases, that we went for many years and never had a fatality car accident, and now we see them every year, two of those last year, unfortunately. And that's just part of growth and more drivers on the road and those kinds of things. So we do see that. What we see in Derby that really impacts us, and we see a change in how this has evolved a bit, is thefts. And thefts are a huge thing. It's it's gone up significantly. Our Part Ones are up 23% since 2020, and most of that is attributed to thefts, and most of that is shoplifts and thefts from primarily big box stores that we have there. So what we see now is much more organized rings of shoplifters. We see them where they can more easily dispose of the property that they steal quickly. They don't have to go to pawn shops anymore. They just take care of it on social media and sell it that way. But we see them now much more likely to confront store employees, confront the police, and use extraordinary means to facilitate their escape. We see a lot of high-speed pursuits as results of shoplifts. Most of those are discontinued because they're certainly not worth the risk. But we see a lot of that. The flock camera systems that we've installed in Derby, and I know Wichita has them, and I'm sure the county has some throughout the county as well, and we'll be getting more, has been a pretty pivotal tool for us to enforce thefts and burglaries and things like that. So that's that's a biggie for us. The other thing that we see a lot of that directly relates to violent crime is drugs. And fentanyl is the is a biggie in Derby. We had a shooting in Derby the other night, and we ended up doing a search warrant on the house and seized a sizable quantity of fentanyl and other drugs. And we're seeing it now on car stops on a routine basis where we have officers that are seizing fentanyl in fairly significant quantities from that. So obviously, you're all aware that the drug trade and violent crime goes hand in hand. So that's just something that I would would point out. We have one specific strategy in place to address thefts, and that's we have a shoplift reduction team that's been in place for about a year. They've kind of kept the lid on as best as possible on shoplifts, but they respond to those. They follow up on them immediately. They don't stop at the city limit boundary on their follow-up. They'll go where they need to to follow up on it, try to do it that shift where we hold people accountable for those actions. Eighty-three percent of the folks doing the shoplifts in Derby don't live in Derby. They live in, they live in Wichita or Sedgwick County, and they come to Derby, do their shoplifts, and they're gone real quickly. So we can't allow that to, you know, once they leave, there has to still be repercussions and follow-up done on it. So that is important. One of the things that, when we're talking about drugs as well, we will have a K-9 coming online in July, so that ought to impact the number of drugs that are seized and those kinds of things as well. So that's kind of where we're at as a as a city in regards to crime. Thank God, violent crime's still relatively low. Property crime is pretty competitive if you look at it per capita with our surrounding neighbors. So much, much to work on still.
Chief and Sheriff, we'll let Chief Sullivan catch his breath a little bit. Why don't you go next and talk about the county and the and the small cities?
Well, good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all today. So what I'm going to cover first, excuse me, is some of our Part One offenses, mainly the violent crimes. We're pretty steady when it comes to homicides. They were up in 2020 and 2021. We had five in 2020 and eight in 2021, which is also indicative of what we've seen across the United States with violent crime, especially homicides being up during COVID. In 2022, we had three, unfortunately. In the first three months of this year, we've already had three. So it's not something that you can really predict. All three of our homicides were drug-related, so and that's what we're seeing with most of our violent crime. It has something, there's a nexus between the violent crime and the drug trade. The next thing is ag assaults. Those have been holding steady throughout the three years, ranging between 118 to 117 between the three years. This year, we have 29 thus far. When it comes to rapes, those have been very steady as well, with the highest being in 17 in 2022, 16 in 2020, and 16 in 2021. However, we're already up to 10. We had seven in the month of March. So we're looking at the causation of that, and we're looking at what other education tools that we can do. A lot of those cases were date rape kind of cases. And so it was not where we had people, unknown suspects breaking into the houses and those type of things. Most of them were date rape. So that's an education process that I think that we need to put out to the public. Next up, we have robberies. Those are very steady as well. In fact, they were down in 2022 to 11. 2021, we had 14 thus far. This year, we only have two. One of the issues that we have out in the county is terrible traffic accidents and a lot of fatalities involving traffic accidents. And so we do a lot of specialized traffic enforcement in our high accident areas, and then also DUI saturation patrols, and we do other types of traffic enforcement in other areas where we know that we have an influx of drunk drivers, say like Fridays and Saturdays around, you know, Club Rodeo is kind of new, which is a bar establishment out in the county. We're starting to see an uptick in crime there as well, as far as ag assaults, fights, disorderly conduct, and then people who are impaired that are leaving that facility or that business. And so one of the things, and I'll kind of repeat what the chief has said, most of our stuff is related to some type of drug nexus. Our burglaries were actually down 12% last year compared to the years in the past, but our thefts were up by 15%. And so a lot of times, we don't have a lot of businesses out in the county, so it's not shoplift, but it's more like farm equipment and stuffs out of barns, sheds, those type of things that are being taken. As the chief has stated, a lot of that stuff now doesn't go to pawn shops. It gets sold over social media. So we have a couple of detectives that are kind of specialized in social media to try to locate some of the stolen property that is taken and try to set up stings to be able to buy that stolen property back or attempt to buy that stolen stolen property back and then get the property back plus somebody into custody for the theft. So those are the things that we're seeing. It is, again, kind of disheartening when it comes to the influx of of drugs and especially fentanyl at this point. It used to be methamphetamine. We're still seeing methamphetamine, but not at the rate that we're seeing fentanyl. We have the police department and the sheriff's office have a combined narcotics unit, which works extremely well with each other. And those units plus our interdiction unit and the chief's interdiction unit, it was somewhere in the range of about 2 million fentanyl pills that were taken last year off the streets. And so it is a huge influx here. We have seen a rise in our drug cases, mainly due to fentanyl, of about 15% as well in the amount of drug cases that we seized drugs off of to have tested. And so I'm sure Shelley will kind of cover a little bit because it all goes to Shelley's shop to be tested, and you'll she'll have some other stats, I'm sure, for you to tell you what kind of drugs they're seeing and the amount that is being seized at this point.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Good morning. I'll jump right in there. So I hate to do to even say this because I'm superstitious, but you know, the city of Wichita is bucking the national trend when it comes to homicide. Their five-year average is down 61%, and we're down 62% thus far this year, but we're early in the game, so we're certainly not declaring success. In in terms of ag gun, we're steady, and the five-year trend is also significantly downward. But in the category of ag other, meaning an aggravated assault that's committed with anything but a gun, including DVs, we're up significantly this year, and I really don't know why, and the five-year average is up. But I have my analysts really trying to drill down on that and find out why the precipitous rise. In terms of rape, for the year, we're down 4%, and over the last five years, we're showing an 8% decrease. Robberies were even for the year, but looking at the five-year trend, it's it's a 16% decrease. Property crime is an emergency emerging problem in Wichita. In fact, there's a hearing today on the second chance dealer's law that we're that we already had amended and we're pushing back on several things. You know, the bottom line is anything of value that has a serial number or a price tag, there needs to be some some mechanism in place to track who's selling those things to secondhand dealers. And we're not, you know, I understand it need to be business friendly, but we have to balance that because we have ever-increasing homeless problem in Wichita. And I think there's some discussion that needs to be had around that and contribution of state parole to that problem, as well as some social service agencies from other states. We're talking to people that are part of our homeless population, and they're talking about having come here from other places. And I think we have to, you know, it's a non-scientific study that I'm doing admittedly, so I'm not reaching any conclusions. I think it merits further discussion, though, because we have a reputation here in Sedgwick County and in Wichita of being of being very generous and welcoming people, and I just want to make sure that's not being taken advantage of at our expense. But burglary is also up significantly in Wichita for the year, even though over the five-year average, we show a 4% decrease. I'm very concerned about the sudden rise in burglary and retail theft. And retail theft has been a problem for quite some time, but it's up 38% this year, and it's up 39% for the over the five-year average. And Casey Slaughter had done some, again, some some quick studies, and we talked to some of our largest retailers, and some of my stores are some of, in those, within those change chains, some of my stores are their biggest problems, and these are national chains, either regionally or nationally. Some of my stores, stores in the city of Wichita, have the highest rates for retail theft, and I think that's a trend that we need to get on now and start looking at, because obviously that's being driven by social problems of homeless homelessness, homelessness related to the opioid crisis that's going on right now. But that's something I definitely want to keep an eye on. And in that vein, and you know, we've had this discussion, that, you know, there's a concern about forensic capacity within within the county that's contributing to the problem in terms of traffic fatalities are up, and that is much of that is related to DUI. So we need a quicker turnaround on on our DUI cases and a quicker turnaround on our drug cases. And we've explored other opportunities, and you know, everyone seems to be in a kind of in the same position, and that includes our our federal partners. Guns stolen from vehicles is a huge problem. And, you know, I would like to say, though, as a new, as a new member of this community, you know, I think it's it's great, the partnership that the police department enjoys with the sheriff's department. You know, I think the EMCU unit is just an incredible model for the country, and that only works because of the partnerships between the sheriff's department and the police department and the the social service providers that give us the expertise that we don't have. But I think on on multiple levels, the partnership between the police department and the sheriff's department is really a very important and valuable valuable asset to the city and the county. And I know we're exploring ways to to continue to increase that.
Thanks, Chief. I'm going to go a little bit out of order. I'm going to go with Alora and Dr. Stedman and come back to the sheriff to speak from the jail perspective, just as, and this isn't the worst of news. I mean, this is really pretty good news as far as violent crime and some of the other areas we've seen significant increases, but I'm hearing a lot of drug stuff, Shelley, so you can prepare for that discussion. But Alora, can you kind of talk about 911 and what happens on the street, how your staff, what your stresses are feeling right now, and and kind of what you're looking for in the future?
Sure, yes. So Elora Forshi, Director of Emergency Communications.
Shelley Hughes is Mike.
Thank you. Sorry, I've got a lot of room to take. Okay. Elora Forshi, Director of Emergency Communications. I did not come with statistics because I knew that the law enforcement community was going to already provide that. But Tom had on this in the beginning, everything that happens out on the streets starts in 911, or most everything. So when those shoplifts occur, the shootings, the violent crimes, they all start with a 911 call. So any increase in workload out in the street correlates to an increase in workload and dispatch. One of the other things that we are seeing with this is that those violent crimes take longer to investigate. You know, there, it's not as quick to go out as a deputy or an officer and work that call versus working a traffic accident or a parking violation, something like that. So as we are all within public safety, seeing issues with staffing and concerns around staffing, when we have these violent crimes that are increasing, that increase those on scene times, those other people that are calling in those parking violations, those loud noise complaints, they are calling back more frequently to ask where officers are for that. And obviously, officers are tied up on higher priority events, and the reason behind that is sound. But for that person that's calling in for what they deem as their emergency, they want somebody there right now. Just as an example, Sunday night, very busy, there was a gentleman that was upset that 15 minutes has passed and nobody's been out on his non-hijery accident. And so the perception from the public that Wichita is a smaller community, where that response is going to be very rapid to these low-level calls, I think still guides them or that perception is causing people to call back and frustrated, a lot of which comes out on our staff for those response times. The other part of that, and again, you've heard all the statistics about the rise, but just how it impacts our staff is those calls are a little bit harder to take. And so when we are looking at the mental health of public safety employees, having somebody that's calling in a shooting is very different than somebody that's calling in a parking violation. Obviously, a lot more emotion, a lot more, just a heightened situation, and that takes a toll. And going from those calls and rolling right into a next call, which is a reckless driving complaint, the up and down of it all, it starts to wear after a while. So again, it's the, everything that rises up in the field, all those trends going up creates upward ticks in dispatch and what we're handling there.
So we have the unique position of being involved in the Part One crime trends by virtue of our autopsy services and toxicology laboratory, as well as our forensic science center, but also serving our community with that autopsy service on the pathology side. So what I know, and these statistics are not incredibly up to date, but the trends are going to be similar, is that the statewide, you know, while we're 17% of the state's total population, 31% of the Part Run, Part One crimes happen here, 40% of the state's total violent crimes happen here, and 32% of the state's total homicides happen here. And our our facility services, the autopsy provider for most of the adjacent counties. So we're probably managing somewhere between 40 and 50% of the state's homicides with our autopsy services. We focus a lot on getting those cases completed. We've used a lot of creative ways to get instrumentation required to do that and to offset the caseload during the period while we're validating that instrumentation so that we can bring it all onto line and resume 100% of our tox services locally instead of sending them out. As far as fentanyl goes, I came to the commission with a grant request in 2020, and I said that I noticed this number of cases involving fentanyl was a little bit concerning. It had increased from 15% to 20% of our total overdose cases. By the following year of that, it was 25%. I think we're going to be looking upwards to 27% once the last 105 or so autopsy cases from 2021 are completed. Of the overdose cases we have, 54% or well over half of them involve fentanyl. As the sheriff said, all of those cases come to us. When you look at our statistics, you can look at the number of fentanyl exhibits that we're testing on a month-to-month basis, but you have to keep in mind that there's a sampling procedure involved. So sometimes, an exhibit can be a sample of hundreds of thousands of pills. And I've told you before, these cases and these pills are coming over in Christmas totes full of pills. So that said, I've had some meetings recently with the chief of police and his captains there at the police department. The backlog in which we're able to give you results for drug identification of seized drugs on the streets so that those investigations can move forward, we can prosecute those cases and get those dealers off the street are delayed because for a great period of last year, we had two qualified scientists and four full-time positions. When you have a trainee, it takes time to train that trainee, it takes resources, and that those individuals who are qualified aren't able to do 100% casework. Some of their attention is diverted towards training. Our fourth full-time employee will start in June. And just as a matter of illustrating the importance of having a fully trained staff, during the months of January and February, we were basically completing an average of 50 to 70 cases. Last month, with three fully trained individuals, we issued 188 cases. Yes, we have an 1,100 case backlog, but if we get our other person online trained, we we know from, we know from experience, we had an 800 case backlog when I was appointed interim director, and we resolved that with a fully trained staff in a matter of months. And so when we get our fourth person, we are hoping to resolve that by the end of this year so that we can resume to a period of 2020 when we were able to have, when we looked at the 60-day backlog, it was one case, two cases. Now we look at the 60-day backlog, it's 400 cases, 300 cases. It's it's just a matter of getting back to where we were a couple of years ago. I can circle back around about grants. We've been, I think, really creative, but it's hard to manage a facility like ours when you're depending on grants to get by. It's hard to sleep at night if you don't know if you're going to be able to pay your maintenance agreements because you don't know if you're going to get a grant award or not. And to that end, I think we've been successful in getting those grants and moving things around and creating some resources that we can rely on in case of emergency that we didn't have in the past. As far as our staffing, I've talked to you before about our capacity, what our building can allow, what we have, what other places have, what the federal recommendations are. For example, in medical investigations, you should have, you know, one MI per so many autopsy cases performed, and we're staffed at about half of that recommendation. I can compare us to Johnson County, Jackson County, no matter where you look, we're short-staffed. And those are hard jobs as it is to be a first responder. It is very difficult mentally to be a last responder. And I believe that every person who works in our shop should be able to come to work and expect to work 40 hours a week for the pay that they're receiving, not 55. And I think they should have good instrumentation to work on. And so that's what, you know, we're we're doing, working with our partners. We're trying to prioritize cases as we can. We get lists from the DA's office. We send lists to the DA's office. Are any of these cases LO'd? And we're working from every angle to expedite the analysis that's absolutely needed for prosecuting the cases.
Thank you, Sheriff. Can you talk about you?
So kind of the biggest animal in the room is always the jail. And so just to give you some average daily populations that we've had, in 2020, we had our average daily population was 1503. In 2021, it was 1422. And in 2022, it was 1458. Thus far this year... Thus far this year, we're at 1263. In 2020, and 2021, and in 2022, we've reached the plateau of 1,600 inmates. It stayed almost at 1,600 inmates in 2020. And so why are we seeing a decrease? A lot of times, jail populations was based on seasons, time of year. You don't generally about October through the first of March, our population would be down because it was not, it's cold here, not near as much crime, those type of things. And then we would see it spike in July, August, September. And so I can tell you in 2021 and 22, that spike in, not the spike, but the decrease never occurred. It stayed steady the entire time. And so, you know, we did a lot of creative things with the judges and with the DA during COVID on, you know, people who had, who was in our custody for child support, working with city courts on some of the stuff that they were committing people for, those type of things. We're back to the way it normally is and as far as, you know, the city commitments and those type of things, because I'll be honest with you, when it comes to, especially in city courts, most of those folks that have been committed, they have been given seven, eight, 10 chances to either pay their fines, to show up to court, those type of things, and it's failure to appear after failure to appear after failure to appear. And at a certain point, a judge is going to hold them accountable for those actions. And it's the same with district court judges when it comes to parole violations and probation violations. And so I don't think we want to be known here as a community that we're just going to let you make mistake after mistake after mistake and not hold you accountable, especially once you've been convicted. And so those type of things are, we still work in that realm. I know that Judge Garing, DA Bennett, myself have been meeting on processes because the processes sometimes is what causes the issues. We have 54 people that have been convicted that are going to prison that were waiting on journal entries to be signed. None of those journal entries have to do with the DA's office or the judges, it has to do with defense attorneys, some of which were almost a year old. And so between the judge and DA Bennett, they're working on those defense attorneys to get in, it doesn't even have to get in, it's e-file, they push a approve button on their computer. Well, that's 54 people that shouldn't be in our custody right now. And so still working through KDOC issues, they still require us to have a 10 day quarantine over COVID before they'll accept them. So they've done a lot better job, they haven't closed their doors in quite a while because that was another huge issue we're having, they just closed their doors and we have, we're packed to the gills with people that need to go to prison. So they're doing a much better job. The 10 day quarantine, we make it work. And so those are kind of the numbers. The other problem that we have is out of county housing. Some of you were on the board and appreciate the fact that you approved for us to go to have the annex, which increased about 178 beds. We did a study on that, about a six month study prior to asking for funding to retool the annex and turn that into a smaller jail setting instead of work release. During those three years that we looked at, the ADP was right around 350 all three years. So increasing our bed space to 1,407, we thought would decrease our funding needs for out of county housing. The first six months, it worked great. And then we had 2020 happen. So we had to go back to out of county housing, which might, the budget for the sheriff's office is 2.2 million, and that was at $35 a day. The problem now is sheriffs have gotten together and they've raised their prices to 50 or $60 a day. So one of my budget proposals this year is to increase that out of county housing budget by $2 million. So that's 4.2 million in out of county housing. We'll try everything we can to keep folks in there, but also when you're short staffed, it's impossible. And so part of 2022, we shut down two pods because we just didn't have the staffing. I will tell you, the staffing numbers are getting a lot better. We're right around 70 down instead of 127. We have another class of 16 that's starting, we have a class of 10 that's graduating Thursday night. And so we've seen a decrease in the amount of folks that are leaving. We've had a recent spike, we had four people leave in the last three weeks, most of which came out of the academy not too long ago, and it just said, this is not the job for them, and they've moved on. And so we're retaining more and we're hiring more. So we brought back everybody from out of counties. We're not paying any out of county costs as of Monday because our ADP is 1,263. I looked this morning and we were at 1,280. And so we still have open beds. Now, some of those open beds, we can't put people in because the cells themselves are not functional, they're having to be fixed. And that takes a while, and so we have to weld the doors shut, those type of things, stuff can get fixed in that set. So what I'm getting at is, is that at a certain point, and I want to discuss with each one of you privately, we've always talked about never adding on to the jail because if you build it, they will come. The other part of that is, is how would we staff any addition to the jail? As you know, you're funding a project where we're going to turn the north side of the jail into mainly all cameras. We will have staff not inside the cells themselves, or inside the pods themselves, but roving to deputy squads that will do their checks, take care of the things that need to take care of in the pods, which can cut down our staffing by 24 people. That's something that we probably need to discuss as well, that if we do look at an addition to the jail, then it will have to be geared that way. The fact of relying on staff to run all of this is, it's not possible. And so at some point, we have to take a look at, and I'm not big, I've never been big on adding on to the jail, but at what point taxpayer money of 4.2 million dollars a year goes out to other counties for them to build new jails? Because there's counties around here that have used the money from Cedric County to build new jails. And so at what point do we look at what is a cost saving measure for us and what is better for our taxpayers? And so that's the discussion that I'm going to engage with you guys to see what it is that we should do in the future. We would still have to, because I know in 91, when the jail was built, they filled it. In 94, when they added on and built the new jail, they filled it. We have decreased, a lot of it was misdemeanor stuff. And so a lot of those things will have to stay in place, and the processes that we're trying to fix right now have to stay in place, or that's how you overcrowd a jail again. And so you have to, you know, judges every day have to weigh who is going to stay in jail and who's not going to stay in jail, what type of bonds are going to be assessed, those type of things. And so, you know, there's some people that are very bad people and very violent people in this society, and so their bonds are higher for a reason. And so when we have an uptick in violent crime, and right now, we have an uptick in EMCU cases, the violence against children, the sexual abuse of children is going up. And so those folks usually stay in our jail for a very long time. We have two pods of nothing but sex offenders. It used to be one because we can't house them in general population with other people because of the violence that will take place against them. And so those are all issues that we face every day in jail. And so again, I'd like to, you know, have those conversations. I know this is the first you're hearing about, the $2 million part with out of county housing. And so, but I wanted to get that conversation out in front of you, so if you have questions today, or we can meet separately and we can talk more specifically what we're seeing there and why we're having to ask for that amount of money.
Thanks, Sheriff. It was a great cherry till right there, but, no, I'm just kidding. But go to the DA and the judge, we'll let Mark go first, and as you guys are talking, could you, the commission authorized a lot of ARPA dollars to help with the backlog. If you could give us just a quick status update on how that's working or what you're seeing. Mark, you can go first.
With respect to ARPA dollars, the, I would tell you that we have used that primarily to work on efforts to work down the backlog, but really to avoid the backlog. For instance, Johnson County shut their courts down for 15 months during 2020 and 2021. We were shut down for, I would say around seven weeks, something like that, from 17th, 18th day of March of 2020 till about Memorial Day weekend, at which point I know all of my trial attorneys were back in the courthouse, at least part time, if not full time. All the supervisors were full time, and the judges were open for business. We did all kinds of, maybe in hindsight, crazy things to try to, to keep the doors open from, you know, the most plexiglass in one small confined place we've ever seen, you know, other than a hockey, actually, there's no hockey rink that had as much plexiglass as that courtroom, so. But we kept the lights on, and I'll just say, as a result, and this was as of, we haven't, I haven't pulled the stats in the last month and a half because I use this sort of test to find for the legislature about some other issues, but as of first part of March of this year, cases filed in 2020, so the year of the pandemic, 99% of the cases in Cedric County, and we've almost filed exclusively felonies, 99% of them are in judgment, meaning they're done, they're resolved, 92% from 2021, and 72% from just last year. So we really got a lot of work done, and I'd say that collectively, the defense bar, the judges, and the prosecutor's office, the DA's office. So that's how your, the ARPA money was being spent was in staff time and attorneys, just throwing as many bodies at the machine gun nest as possible to keep it going so that we didn't, you know, through attrition, through, you know, we had, there wasn't a period of time in 2020 or 2021 when I didn't have at least, you know, one group of lawyers who, you know, were kind of in an area. One of them got COVID, so they all had to go home. And so that was just a recurring, rolling basis. So even despite all of that, we were able to get that much done. So as of this morning, we have 99 pending homicides. That may seem like a lot in compared, if you'd asked me in 2016, I'd have fallen off my chair because 50 to 60 was a bad year prior to 2020. But over the last three years, we've been hovering at 125 to 130 at any given moment. So we're down 30, which means we're making progress. I see that as progress. I also see it as a reflection of the, there was a huge spike regionally, locally, nationally in violent gun crime in 2020 and 2021, 2022 to some extent. Things have started to trend backwards. I'm guessing it'll be decades of somebody smarter than me going back and looking at the trends, trying to figure out what caused this. I have no doubt that the pandemic was a major contributor. Don't ask me to explain why, I don't know that anybody really has their arms around that, but why is it that Garden City and Louisville and Detroit all had record numbers of homicides? I mean, what does Garden City have to do in common with Louisville, in common with Baltimore? I mean, there was something going on. But at any rate, those trends are coming down, at least in terms of homicides, so we're benefiting from that as well, but getting a lot done. In terms of, if I'm sitting where you are, what do I need to think about in terms of budgeting over the next number of years with respect to my office and vicariously the courts? You know, one thing that Shelley mentioned, the amount of fentanyl, and Sheriff mentioned also in terms of fatalities, we do an awful lot of vehicle fatalities that are based upon intoxicated drivers, and the level of intoxication, to my mind, I always think of drunk drivers. There's still a, I mean, it's almost an artifact of the past. You see some guy who blows into a tube and he's, you know, .08 or above on alcohol, and it's sort of a novelty, wow, a drunk driver. We're usually dealing with people who are THC or fentanyl. And I don't have the numbers in front of me, but there, it's, I would say it's fair to say most of the drivers, they may have alcohol on board as well, but that is not the only thing that's going on. And as a result, it takes more time before we can charge them, get them off the streets. I can't charge a case unless I know what my evidence is, and so they, we have to return them to the streets for a number of weeks until we can get that done. And Shelley's folks can't just turn it over overnight, and every case is a priority, so that is an issue. Let's see here, the property crimes, I would say, assuming everybody up here, property crimes obviously is an issue. We have tried to prioritize violent crimes, sex crimes, things like that over the last several years, but I knew that, in my sight prioritizing, let me clarify, we did not, we were not charging as many property crimes. We didn't have bandwidth, we didn't have the, defense attorneys didn't have the time in court, despite all the efforts that were made. The inability to jury trials in 2020 and about half of 21 did impact our ability to get cases through the system. So we prioritized the most violent and the repeat offenders. However, in the last, since January, we started up a new docket, and that's a combination of cooperation between the courts. So Judge gave me a judge who's dedicated to this one docket. I put two lawyers in there full time, and I've got a law firm that's been hired by BIDs, Board of Defense Services, paid for by the state, who handles the funding for public defense. And the three of us got our heads together and started this docket. And it's, we call it the resolution docket, doesn't have to be that, but that's just shorthand for us. What we do is, it put a lot of burden on me primarily in my office to get everything together before the case is filed, all discovery. So when the case is filed, literally the defense team that's in this one firm is handed a packet that they know they've got everything, they've got a plea offer, they've got the restitution packet, I mean, it's all put together. I hired a retired attorney here in town, a defense attorney with 40 years of experience, and he works 20 hours a week for us, and what he does is gets the plea agreements together and sends those out, we review everything. But it's, again, it's a Herculean task being put together, but in the first 30 days, we resolved 51 cases, so more than one a day. And anybody who doesn't want to take advantage of this, fine, go to the regular docket and we'll handle, you can go, you know, file your motions of suppress and whatever else you need to do. But most people were screening these cases significantly, most of these folks are taking advantage of this, saying, all right, I want restitution paid, and I want you in drug treatment if drugs are the thing driving your crime. Once you do that, the carrot and the stick is, then I'll let you off probation early, fine. But I do have a long memory, if you come back, the stakes go up. So that's one way that we can try to address the issues that have been raised by really everybody up here in terms of, from the law enforcement perspective, how do we address, get our arms around what is less significant in the aggregate in terms of violent crime, et cetera, but are very specific to the businesses and the individuals who are calling, going, why isn't a cop here? Someone just broke into my shed and I'm mad about it, and I want something done about it. We've got to figure out a way to balance those two efforts, the violent crime and the impact that has on the community, and also making sure we find time and make time, and that's really what we've done, is we've made a space, made time for property crimes and low level drug crimes. And I think that's hopefully going to help us long term. If I'm, one, I know I'm going a little close to my time here, but one other thing I'd mention is, over time, the other issue we're having, and kind of commission was very generous in terms of recognizing the need for raises and compensation for my lawyers and for a lot of folks county wide, and that has helped. But there's still an issue that really is beyond your control, and that is defense counsel. We have a real lack of defense attorneys. There's nothing unique about that. You look around the United States, and there has been a tremendous withdrawal from the practice, from the defense bar. Older folks are retiring and saying that, gone, I'm done. Younger people are looking at this going, I don't want to be a part of this. The law schools are graduating much smaller classes than they used to, and there's any number of reasons from the college debt that they're already undertaking before they even get to law school and et cetera. But there may come a point when the county's going to have to step in, I'm not suggesting it right now, but if I'm, you know, if I have a 10 year plan, five year plan, and start looking at ways to augment what BIDs is doing here to try to draw some more people back into the practice. I can't function, the courts can't function unless I've got a dance partner. A prosecutor standing up one side of the room and saying the state's ready, I have to look over at the other side, I know that the guy on the other side is competent, is ready, and is not carrying 180 cases. Because there's no, we might as well just tee it up, let's go ahead and set it, you know, pencil it in for two years down the road for when we're going to have the 1507, what's the ineffective assistance of counsel claim. what's the ineffective assistance of counsel claim. So it's not your burden, it's not your responsibility, but I can see a day, if I'm looking at trends, I can see a day when counties are going to start bidding, outbidding each other for, you know, if you come to practice in Wichita, we'll throw an extra 50 bucks an hour on that whatever bids is paying you to do defense work. That may be Pollyanna, that may be hyperbolic, but I'm just looking around the country, the region and certainly in Wichita and seeing an issue there. So those are the, sort of the trends as I'm seeing them.
Well, in terms of the court, I think our stats show that jury trials that will run this year will be back to pre-COVID levels. So we are, we are running full steam. The two big line items in our budget that you all give us, is money to pay for county-appointed attorneys, so these are the people appointed to the misdemeanors, the people appointed out in juvenile, and the money that's spent on jurors. So we, I just asked Joni, she sent me some stats, we bring in anywhere between 175 and 250 jurors a week to run trials. To get that number, we have about a 35% return rate on summons, so in order to get 175 to 250 jurors, we have to send out between 500 and 700 summons a week because most people just don't respond to the jury summons. So we're cognizant of the fact that we don't want to waste the resource of people who are showing up every week for jury service. So the judges are, we're trying to work more as a group rather than as individual captains. So if you have jury trials on your week that's set and all of them went away, that continued or pled, so you're available, you have another judge who has two cases ready to go, but he can only try one, well, we've got a judge available to try a case. So we're doing these things endeavoring not to waste the resource of jurors that are showing up, we want to take full advantage of that. In terms of court-appointed work, I'm just going to echo what Mr. Bennett said, that in my opinion, we have a crisis of court-appointed defense attorneys in this county. Mark and I were talking the other day and you, if you look around at attorneys that are capable on the appointment list, that, once you get past the public defender's office and those things, and you look at people on the private appointment list or even private counsel that you can hire, who is doing homicides? And that is an aging population. Who are these people that are doing this work that are under the age of 45? You really got to strain to find an attorney under the age of 45 that's doing these higher-end felonies. So this population of defense attorneys is aging out, they're retiring, they're not being replaced at any kind of rate that is going to help us. And I think there, I think one of the big reasons for that is that it's very difficult to get statutorily qualified to represent clients at the level ones and higher. The statute says that you have to have so many hours, second-chairing, level-one trials, and that's just very, very difficult for people in private practice to get to. About the only way you can qualify statutorily to do those high-level cases is either be in the public defender's office where you can get a lot of time in a lot of cases or be in the prosecutor's office where you can get a lot of time in a lot of cases. But if you're in private practice and you're not partnered up with one of these older lawyers, it's just very difficult to get the hours in trial and the time in trial, a second chair to be qualified to do a first-chair, higher-end trial. Part of the ARPA basket that we got was a pretty significant sum of money to pay for defense attorneys. We're finding that it's a challenge because most of that stuff has to go through bids. So we have one of our Charlie pegs reaching out to bids to see if there is some way that we can't say, look, we have the money to pay for a young second chair. If you put that second chair in to a qualified defense attorney, and let's try to grow some of these attorneys to backfill what we're losing in terms of retirement. And, you know, if we could, if in a year and a half, we could get five defense attorneys qualified to do level-one cases, we'd be light-years ahead of the game. The Governor Kelly just appointed a very good defense attorney to replace Judge O'Connor on the district court bench, which, great for us, but she was handling a significant number of high-end, high-level felony cases. And this is another example of we're losing these defense attorneys by attrition, by retirement, they get appointed to judgeships, a lot of them, you know, a lot of the public defenders, they'll be in the public defender's office for five years, they'll get burnt out, they'll go up and practice in Kansas City or in Johnson County or someplace else. So we're looking at creative ways to try to backfill what we're losing through retirement and, and, in my opinion, I don't understand, I mean, other than the difficulty being statutorily qualified, I would think that there is a market for a defense attorney who's 40 to 45 years old and is qualified to do level-one felonies, I would think that that attorney would have a full practice and a full business and would be making money in this town. So I think the conditions are there, there's the need there, there's demand there, we just need to figure out some creative ways to fill that demand. At the county level, currently bids reimburses their attorneys at $120 an hour, the county currently reimburses defense attorneys at $85 an hour. It's difficult to convince people to do county court-appointed work when there's that level of discrepancy between the bids rate and the county rate. Joni tells me that part of our ask for next year would be to increase those rates from $85 to $100 an hour. We're still not at parity with bids, but we're closing that gap where, you know, it's more attractive to do that sort of, that sort of work. So that's the 50,000-foot view of what's going on in the courts.
Thanks, Jeff. Well, Steve, as the loan corrections guy here, you can finish that. Can I have a little more questions? Come on in.
Steve Stonehouse with the Department of Corrections. So when I'm looking at the juvenile and adult corrections programs, I look at two different periods of time. For kids, I look at before 367 and for adults, I'm looking before the pandemic or kind of in the middle of the pandemic, just to compare what's going on. With juveniles, we've seen an increase about 40% in the number of kids being assigned to probation. So we do intensive probation that is signed by the district court after conviction. So we have an increase in the number of kids who are on probation and we know because of Senate Bill 367, the majority of them are living in our community. We don't have the Boys Ranch, we don't have out-of-home placements, we have one correctional facility that we might have 30 kids there right now, the rest are in the community on some sort of supervision. And the severity level of the kids in this community is about double what we had before the 367. So we have more severe cases, more felony, person felonies, living in the community. Things that folks up the stream already talked about, substance abuse and mental health issues, exasperate, everything that happens. If you read about a juvenile in the Eagle, just put the word fentanyl in there someplace, that's going to be what's happened. If you read about a kid escaping from us, put the word fentanyl in there, that's what's going to be on board with those folks. That's just who, then we see them at JAC, then we see them in detention, so, and I'm talking about kids under the age of 18. So fentanyl continues to be effective everywhere from what the law enforcement has seen on the street all the way to the end when they're, we're trying to deal with them in the community. That means we have a lack of inpatient beds. We were able to put some inpatient beds on for boys, 16 and up, but unfortunately, juvenile justice system goes from 10 to 18, 10 to 23, and females, we have no beds for females. So this community is not serving anybody but 16 to 18-year-olds with inpatient beds. Mental health beds, the sheriff has a much bigger problem than we do of folks waiting to go for, in jail, waiting to go for competency testing and restoration, but we have a microcosm in juvenile of the same thing, of kids who are not even to the point of being determined if they're competent or not, staying between 300 and 600 days. It's a big, it's a big number, big variation, but that's what we have is variation, just for evaluation. In the adult system, our overall numbers from between 20 and 23 are down, but the presumptive prison sentence of people who typically could go to prison are up by about 10% more presumptive felon, or prisons sentences and a 52% increase in person crimes being supervised in the community by ISP. I'll just talk a little bit about our staffing situation. We lost 16 ISOs, established probation officers during the pandemic. So they had to be replaced by people either from our detention facility, jail or outside the system. Somebody who comes on board cannot do the same work as somebody who's been here a year or two. So we had that many new people supervising more serious folks in the community. It's a bad combination. So if we want to avoid this in the future, we need to somehow keep our eye on salaries for all folks in the system, otherwise we're going to have the same thing. And when you lose, when you lose 16 trained people, you don't replace them overnight. Even if I bring somebody in for their body, they're not fully trained for two years just because of the monitoring that they have to have. So that's something that we need to keep on our radar, is that if we want to have a robust probation system, we have to keep salaries competitive, otherwise they just are going to skip around to the different services. I think that's about all the good news that I have. The county and the state did raise salaries for all of our staff, so our staffing levels have improved. That is positive, but it's something that, like I said, we're going to have to keep our eye on, otherwise we'll be back in the same situation.
Chairman, to the board now for a question.
Well, okay, that's, so the way the schedule works is incredible thanks to you all. Some good news and some challenging news. We can go to our questions and comments and thank you again. This is a great picture of the whole, of the big picture, so. Who wants? Sarah, you have anything that you want to ask and just kind of go down the list?
Okay, well, I just have one question and then I'll kind of hear wherever else and then keep going from there, but you said you had 16 that left, out of how many is that? I mean, what's the percentage?
16 out, it's 16 out of about 35. And they didn't leave the profession, they went to work for court services.
Okay.
Yeah, for the state, state-level funded programs.
And now, I know we're, we raise our prices, so we need to be more even with the state, but didn't the state then increase again? So there's another gap, it might not be as large.
It's not as large, but yes, there's another gap, yes.
That's my question.
Okay. Then we might obviously have some follow-ups as the commission hears. Okay, David?
Thank you, I have several questions we go around. First of all, I'll start with Sheriff. You've mentioned the need for additional jail space, the possibility, are we working any kind of CIP for that?
No, the, I want to sit down and have discussions with you guys before we even go down that route. I'm bringing that up as a possibility due to the fact of a $4.2 million budget for out-of-county housing. So we have not worked any of that up until we sat down and discussed the $2 million that's being proposed and also what you guys want to see in the future.
Okay, well, good. We just have to kind of trade off the extra money that we're paying out with the cost of a new jail, so I don't even know what the cost of adding on the jail is, so we kind of got to balance that a little bit.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Sheriff. Chief Sullivan, I've heard you speak a couple times now and one of the things that you talk about over and over again is the testing, it's the forensic science portion of your job. And I know that our forensic science center is a great forensic science center, they're kind of backlogged and we have a CIP out right now to expand their facility to help with that. Exactly, do you know what kind of additional staffing you'd need in order to be able to do your job?
Well, I think if there was just, if we had one technician assigned just for Wichita, as we are the biggest customer, I think that would really resolve the situation. But I know there's also an issue of, is there enough of testing instruments and room at the present facility? So I know it's a little bit complicated, but one dedicated chemist to the city of Wichita would, I believe, solve that problem.
So I'd have to go to Dr. Stedman, is this something that you're looking at in your budget packages for the future?
We are anticipating our full-time staffing and I'd like to see what that does because previously it resolved an 800-case backlog. I've got a map of when people trained, when they became fully trained and what the backlog was during those times and it's clear that we should be able to achieve the same. I can't guarantee the three that are there now will stay. We've talked about having a person from the Wichita Police Department working in our facility and there are some issues that we're in discussion with at our facilities about the law enforcement agency conducting that investigation, paying the person to do the lab work to produce the results and those type of things as it will relate to how that would be presented in court. But my first order of business is to have fully-trained staff. I think the person that we're hiring, based on the education background, should be up to speed in about three or four months. And again, we've talked about the immediate, there's no immediate solution unless, you know, somebody from the KBI comes and starts working in our lab, but the, there's always going to be that six-month timeline before anything gets better, it's going to get worse. And taking on two trainees at this time is going to put that, it's going to put everything at a screeching halt. So stepwise, we're trying to get back to the point we were. In our four- and five-year outlook for budget, a drug chemist was in that outlook. A medical investigator was prioritized for a decision package. When we were fully staffed in Drug ID, I had people cross-training in toxicology to help battle the backlog for coroner cases because they had time. And so if we can get to the point where we're fully staffed, I don't want to add chemists who have, to a section that has time on their hands, we actually switched one of those individuals to the DNA unit. Consequently, the backlog in DNA has gone from 200 cases to 100 during that period of time and we've been able to keep up with the needs to prosecute those part one, DNA is primarily part one crimes. So, yeah, we've had those conversations and, I mean, 90% of our cases are WPD, so that's where that stands and...
Well, thank you. I know we're getting some opioid funding and we heard from our staff with a large number of requests for the opioid funding and I know we bought some instrumentation for you recently out of opioid, but again, I have all the different recommendations that I heard that day from across the area. And I know education's important, but we have to have the testing, we have to have the analysis, we have to provide that to the DA, to the judges and to me, that is really our highest priority where we need to go with the opioid funding across the board. And so I do support that. Let me move on just a little bit. I know Doug, Gary, you got three new judges, two judges and a magistrate. I do appreciate, I heard that we're going to get a veterans court and thank you very much, that's been something that's at the top of my list for as long as I've been a commissioner. But is there anything else that we can do to move people out of this system? But is there anything else that we can do to move people out of the system into things like the drug court, the veterans court and so forth that would help alleviate some of the backlog that we have?
Well, I think the, the hope is this resolution docket that we're running is going to accomplish that. These are, the customers for that docket are customers that are primed for plea agreements, that are primed for probation. They, they are not typically candidates that are going to go to prison. So it's just a challenge to move these people through the system as efficiently and as quickly as possible. In terms of other sorts of alternative dispute courts, I anticipate that we'll have the VTC up and running sometime this summer. We, the, we partnered with OJA. They've got the, you know, some of the key people in place to set that up. If I didn't know this was going to come up, I'd have Judge Woods give me a fuller update, but I can have that provided to you. It, it, you know, other types of alternate dispute resolution courts, we'd need to look at that. I know the city has a mental health treatment court. I don't know if we have the resources countywide to, to staff a court like that. It may be worth looking into. But you know, you, you want to look at what your customer base is, you'd hate to have an alternative dispute resolution court set up with only five people in that system. So we'll see how the VTC works out. And if that proves to be a model for other type problem solving courts, then, you know, I'm certainly open to that.
Thanks, Judge. I know when you and I talked earlier, several years ago, actually, we talked about both a mental health court and a veterans court. So anything that you can move if it's warranted, it would be much appreciated. Mr. Chairman, thank you. That's all my questions.
Commissioner Bead? Yeah. Why don't you go ahead?
Thank you. I appreciate it. The information is heavy. A lot of this is pretty heavy information. So I, Sheriff in particular, I, I think everyone had commented to some extent on the law enforcement side, how drug use and distribution is fueling and driving many of the issues in crime and the jail population in particular. If staffing and funding was where it needed to be free, what would you do different to address substance abuse and mental health in the jail? What could we do differently in the jail to try to influence those outcomes, inputs and outputs? I mean, I may rephrase it a second way. Is there something from another community that we could glean from that they're doing? We look at and we say, man, they're doing something that's different, that's incremental, that is having an impact that, that maybe we're not doing here that we should have in consideration? More rehab services, plain and simple. The fact that SAC is the only rehab service here that takes people without insurance, without Medicare, those type of things, or Medicaid, is a huge problem in our community. And so most of the folks that are staying in jail, it runs about 72, 73% have some type of addiction issue. Right around 30% has a mental health issue and some of both. And so, you know, when they're inside the facility, we do offer NA and AA. We can't force them to go by no means. And so when they're getting out, a lot of those folks have, have dried out and they're looking for some type of service. So we get with SAC to try to get them placement immediately. The last I checked with Harold, they're about a three month delay. And so these folks are going out, back into the community after they're being released. And they don't stand a chance, to be honest with you. They're going to go right back to their old habits. So I think that if there is some way, even if we could start those services inside the facility before they get out. But the problem there is, is that most of the folks that can get out, get out right away. Most of the folks that are with us for a long time, once they go to trial, those type of things, if they get convicted, then they're going off to prison. And so that's always the problem with any program you start inside the jail is you never know how long they're going to be actually in the program. And so I, I think, and this is a bigger, I'm not a type of person that's soft on crime. I was brought up in a, in a system where everybody goes to jail for what they do and they're held accountable. And so I still believe in that philosophy, but when it comes to the drug aspect of this, I'm just going to be very honest. None of those folks stay in our jail for longer than two or three hours. They're in and out. These are the same people that are why burglaries are on the rise, why thefts are on the rise, they're supporting their habit. There has got to be something from the state, in my opinion, that gives judges the opportunity to place people directly into treatment. They might get probation, but they're going to go for a six month treatment where they're actually placed somewhere. All that costs a lot of money. But, you know, pie in the sky kind of stuff. If we're ever going to see this trend down, because we're a very addicted society, we, we got to start thinking of it in different ways. And incarceration just really doesn't happen for users of narcotics unless they've done something else.
So I appreciate that comment. That's a state, so you've mentioned the state. And my, my next question is who leads that charge? Who takes ownership of that? Is it the state that does it and what department of the state? And what is the mechanism that gets that accomplished outside of the jail?
Well, as far as, as any state statute changed to give judges the opportunity, that has to come from the state. To give them any opportunity to say, okay, I can only give you probation, but here's a state statute where you're going to go to mandatory treatment. And I know that there is some, some of these folks are told to go to treatment. They come and go and then they quit going. And so then that's a violation of probation. Then we start the whole criminal process over again. And so I, I think from that aspect, absolutely. From an aspect of, you know, when the, mental health is not the greatest here right now, we're hoping to resolve that. If you're talking about, you know, a huge rehabilitation center for folks specifically that are charged with crimes that have a drug habit, I personally, I think that has to be state ran. I don't think that that's a county government ran issue. And so, you know, could there be some type of partnership? Or could there be something else there? Sure. But I've mentioned this to some legislators and they kind of give me the same look and that's a good idea. But how do you, how do you start that? How do you fund it? Those type of things.
Last question, then I'll pass it off. But if those things, I'm asking your opinion. If those things exist, those wraparound services, if that exists, does that drive down the amount of crime in this community?
I think it would absolutely drive down the crime because what we're seeing from all three of us that have spoke is drugs is our number one contributor to the crime that we see. And so, you know, the second aspect of that is, is education. We have got to educate the youth in our communities that you've got to stay away from this stuff. Because this is the outcome. You're either going to die, you're going to go to prison, or you're going to lose your family. There, there's really no other outcome that I've seen for folks that stay addicted to narcotics.
Very helpful, Sheriff. Thanks.
Commissioner, I was going to jump in real quick on one, to piggyback what he said. If you wanted to make a difference county level to address what everybody's been talking about, I'd go, I'd move it up. I'd move up in the process. If I'm the judge who sets bond, I mean, what Chef's talking about is I've been through the system. I've been convicted and now as a condition of probation, I'm told I would go to this facility. Aspirational, it's great. Number one, SAC doesn't, they do evals. They don't have a facility to have people spend the night and do long-term treatment the way, what we need. But even before then, just to get to that point that Jeff's just discussed, we're talking months. Meanwhile, they're back in Derby just fleecing, you know, big box stores. So if I'm a judge and I set, I find a guy who's been booked last night on a, on a felony theft. It's a de minimis thing. We're probably going to LLP him out because we'll charge him down the road. But if I said, I'm going to set as a condition of your bond that you go to this place and then we may be, if, if the place existed, if you make bond or, you know, that, that is something that could be done. A condition of bond is that you complete treatment at X facility. And then we had, you know, we could then rethink our drug court. We do have an existing drug court. It's always been a post conviction court, meaning once you're convicted, then you go into this and it's essentially a, we throw services at you to try to, to make you a successful probationer. We have never had the resources to make it a pre-conviction affair. But if the resources were there and we knew we had resources in the community to send somebody to and have some reason, believe it would be successful, that's a conversation we could have about making it a pre-conviction drug court where that, where that niche court could then be the one that monitor, that monitors the person through the system. Would it have an effect on, on crime trends? Let's put it this way. If 10% of the people who go through that sort of a system didn't commit crimes for a year, it would have a seismic impact on crime in this community.
Trying to quantify, that's what I'm trying to quantify.
I mean, we had one guy five, six years ago who was running a crew in Wichita that every cop, the WPD, SO, etc., who are working together, trying to knock down this, this theft crew, a bunch of drug addicts, but they were organized. And they, hell's out of Wichita, they went to Harvey County, Butler County, Kingman County. I think Reno too, but I know they were responsible for, best estimate, well over a million dollars worth of loss. We put a task force together, put, made this guy and his crew our, our priority and put him away for 12 years. It had a measurable effect. One guy had a measurable effect on crime in Sedgwick County, not 10, 20%. I mean, that's, that's, you know, but you could see it. So some of these guys, getting them off the streets, getting their crew off the streets, either in drug treatment or the ones that need to go to prison, in prison, yeah, we could start to, to chip away at what's going on in Derby, the county and the city.
My contention is, is we talk about funding and increases in funding. I'm excited to have the conversation about reform as well and what we could do on the backside of reform to really drive down these numbers. And now we've heard from our DA, we've heard from our sheriff, I've heard the chief mention this before too. There's a sizable opportunity to drive down crime if we have wraparound services and reform in some of these areas. And I think that's the conversation as a community that we have to be front leading. Someone needs to take ownership and lead in that conversation. So this community understands that if we present these opportunities, that it will have a sizable, quantifiable impact on crime in this community, violent crime in this community and addiction in this community. And those are the conversations that we really have to have.
Just to give you an idea of the impact of addiction in the area. Victoria's Secrets is the number four store out of 2,000 stores in America here in Wichita. $30,000 per month in loss. As Cabella's Loss Prevention says, they are number one in loss in the nation here in Wichita. Dick's Sporting Goods is number one and number two for theft in three states, in, in the three state, 11 store area. Academy Sports is number one in the region, which encompasses four states. Old Navy and Gap and Bradley Fair are classified as a group one, which means they are in the top tier for theft in Kansas City and Missouri. Walmart stores at 501 East Ponte and Kellogg and Dugan are top five for theft in the region. So the vast majority of this is being driven by opioids. And if you think about the numbers, just like our DA said, if you, and there's a small number of people committing the vast majority of this large number of crimes. And if we were just able to get them into treatment, kind of incapacitate them in a positive way, it would have an unbelievable impact on overall crime.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez, I have a follow up and then we'll get it.
Thank you. For Dr. Stedman, you've mentioned that we have, your office is 40 to 50% of the homicide autopsies for the state. Is that, is that accurate?
My, yes. We have reduced our services to Reno County because we don't have staffing. We were able to divert their cases up to Johnson County. So other than Reno, which we'll, we'll be reabsorbing when we get our, our third pathologist next, this summer, so.
How much is the state helping with the name of that?
So the coroner's services are basically the, they're the burden of the counties. The system is divided up into districts. So there can be, Sedgwick County is the 18th Judicial District and the 18th District Coroner's Office. But there are certain districts that encompass multiple counties and each county has appointed coroners. Many of those are not forensic pathologists. So they cannot do a forensic autopsy for the determination of cause and manner of death. So that's what we're providing. A lot of other states have state coroner systems like Oklahoma. And then they have different, just like satellite labs for the KBI, they have satellite locations where autopsies would be performed. But in Kansas, we have two main providers, the Johnson County and the Sedgwick County Medical Examiners. And then there's a private provider in northeast Kansas. And there's one doctor in Ellis County, Western Kansas, Hayes, Kansas, that does some autopsies.
Does out of county pay though, or pay us?
The other counties do pay us. We're, that's where our revenue comes and it can be anywhere from $500,000 to a million dollars, depending on the services. We also bill for our tox that goes along with those autopsy services, so.
Well, that's good to know that we're generating that revenue because I know if we're looking at, you know, already huge deficits going forward, it just seems like we're being saddled with such a large burden. So that's, that's helpful to know. I could give you another question for Sheriff Easter, if that's okay. When you're talking about the potential of expanding our jail, if we're looking at really increasing the amount that we're paying for out of county housing, what is that? On Monday, we're down to zero at the moment. So do you anticipate with, I mean, we're hearing all these things on what we're doing for backlogs being taken care of. So hopefully we won't have as many people that we have to have in our jail. Are you anticipating any kind of increase that would warrant either the increase to out of county funding or potential jail expansion?
I'd like to give you a, an answer right now. You know, if the numbers stayed where they're right now, no, not whatsoever. Just like when we did the study for the NX, we really thought the NX would cause us not to go out of county anymore. Because very rarely were we reaching over 1,400. And the ADPs were in the 13, 25 to 1350 range for three years. As soon as we brought that online, about six months later, it all spiked. And so it's, it's hard to predict that stuff. I would like to think that, you know, as part of the conversations that I have with you guys, that we see this number stay where it's at and maybe we don't need that amount of funding for next year. That would be a best case scenario and that's what I hope for. But it, with this stuff, it's just, you can't predict it. And that's the problem that we have is we can't predict when crime trends are going to go way up. I mean, there's, again, as the DA said, you know, during COVID, why did all of that happen? Because that's when this all happened. As far as the increase in numbers, the increase in crime, the increase in incarcerations, the courts being shut down for a while or operating at a lower rate, which caused people to stay in there longer. So I'm hoping with the numbers that we're seeing, that we see that steady number again, because we have not seen that in three years.
And I know that you and you have both been really helpful in trying to get a mental health hospital in this region. Do you think that if we're able to do that and we're successful in that, that will help your numbers as well?
Yeah, absolutely. I think it would because right now we're, we have 34 people on the waiting list to go to longer. So if that hospital was brought here, that waiting list would pretty much disappear, which then means they're able to go, if they're competent enough, they're restored, they're competent enough, they can start the process and the trial process, process again or in the hearing process. Until all of that happens, they can't, the, the judges and the DA and the defense attorney are, are out of it. And so I think that would help. I think that there is some folks that come to us on a regular basis with a hospital being here. We might not see those folks as much because they're getting quality care from a state hospital system instead of sent to osmotomy, put on forced medication and then shipped back to us in four to five days. And then we start the whole process over again.
Okay. And then just my final question is just a follow up from Commissioner Bead and what he was mentioning. If the state would allow judges to send someone to treatment right away, do we have enough treatment facilities for them to even go to? So if we got to that point, we would have that.
No, we don't, not in this, in my opinion.
A lot of them are private treatment facilities and so it's a question of, I don't know if the SB 123 money still fund that.
Not without a conviction.
Yeah. So, so what I've seen typically is once you get to a conviction and they're pre-sentencing, where, where there's a request maybe to depart from the presumptive prison sentence and give me a chance of probation. I've seen judges say, fine, but we're going to continue your sentence. your sentencing and you're going to go through this 90-day treatment program. And we'll see how you do in the treatment program before we'll make a decision on whether you go to prison or stay out of prison. Prior to conviction, you just don't have any tools, because, you know, pre-conviction, everybody has the constitutional presumption of innocence, so it's very difficult to, to require those sorts of things pre-conviction.
I would clarify, there was a bill that was passed, I think in, if my memory serves, in 2020 session, so right as the pandemic was hitting, it might have been 19, but anyway, it was a product of the Criminal Justice Reform Commission, that does allow pre-conviction on diversion money, if someone comes in and applies for diversion, to go to drug treatment. We haven't filed as many of those cases because they were the lowest level drug cases, and frankly, we just, they weren't the priority at the time. So there is probably, Steve and I'll have to get together and talk about how to do that. But again, we had to have a place to put them. And so will these private folks, private entities work with them? And will the money that the state does fund through that be sufficient to get these folks into treatment? I know I talked to somebody just this week who has, somebody reached out to me asking, do you have any recommendations? Got a friend, best, good friend, actually somebody in the legal system, says their child is, is got alcohol, just alcohol issues and probably opioid issues. I recommended a place. It's $20,000. That's the treatment here in Sedgwick County. This particular child is old, too old to be on parents' insurance, although he's employed, doesn't have insurance. So that's unavailable to him. So, you know, those are the kind of impediments that we're up against in terms of trying to, but I mean, if, if this is something we want to talk about, I mean, if I'm listening to everything I'm hearing is Shelley, and what her agency needs is being one of the main priorities, but a secondary priority, at least maybe not in the moment, but, but a long-term plan would be to figure out a way to have treatment more available. I know there's, there'd be a whole host of folks who would say, I'd be damned if I want my taxpayer money going to help some drug addict get off of drugs, you know, just quit doing it. Fair enough, but if we don't do something about it, they're in these stores, you know, setting records for the region and the nation. So Steve and I can work together. I mean, we'll do it, but I have to have a place that'll, that we can send them, that will take them, and we can look the judges in the eye and say, I believe we have a reason to believe that this person is in a better position 90 days later, six months, whatever it is, to be successful. All weekend in treatment, I mean, we might as well just, again, pencil in the conviction date or the jury trial down the road, because that ain't going to get it done.
Okay. Thank you for letting me answer your questions. I'll be right back.
First of all, I'll say thank you for everybody being here today, and thank you, thank you, manager, for putting this together during the budget cycle. Maybe other commissioners said it as well, but I remember, I remember saying that, the question was, what are we hearing from people at the doors? What are the concerns of the community? And I said, people don't feel safe. And I think that that's a, that's our responsibility to make sure we have things in place to deal with these types of issues. And the problems feel overwhelming. When you hear all the challenges together, I feel like this is almost an impossible problem to solve. But I do thank all of you for speaking today. I do have a few questions. I'll go back to Chief Lee for just a minute. You know, you mentioned, you're the first one that mentioned the big-box store theft. And I was curious, can you characterize, surely, surely some of the folks that are committing these thefts have been caught. Can you characterize, generally speaking, broad brush, characterize the type of people committing these, these types of, these types of thefts?
Sure. Normally, it's adults. We have, we have relatively few juveniles involved in those kinds of crimes. It's primarily people that have prior criminal convictions, usually for the same type of offense. So like I mentioned early on, that we do see a difference in it, in that they're, they're bolder than they've ever been before with regards to these thefts. They'll walk in, steal high-dollar tools right in front of the employees, they'll remind the store employee of what their store policy is with regards to confronting them, and then push the cart out the door, and then come back later that afternoon and get the rest of the stuff they wanted. So it's, it's bold there. They're confrontational with employees, they're confrontational with police, and we see a lot of extraordinary means to try to avoid arrests now. So it is a significant problem. I was at one of the big-box stores a few months ago, looking at a particular tool that I noticed the day before, they had three boxes of them and displayed down below the, below the display model. And I told them, I want one of those. And the employee jokingly said, we're all stole out. And that's, that was true, that they had every one of them walked out the door from that day that I was in there to look at them prior. So it is a huge issue. It's, it all relates to the drug issues, very much so. And we're seeing more of these folks that, when we finally do stop them in cars, we're finding more weapons, things of that nature. So it is not your person on the spur of the moment that is going out, making a bad decision. These are planned-out things. This is what they do.
None of you talked about vandalism, but is there anything that you would say there's a trend on vandalism and who's doing that type of thing?
Oh, yeah, we have, we do have a problem sporadically with homeless just breaking windows for no particular reason. I wouldn't say that's a major problem, but it's something I've observed. But more commonly, it's, it's then followed by a burglary, but we do have acts of vandalism.
For some, bring that up again, it's more publicly, we're more publicly aware of it. When people, things get vandalized, the public perception is this is, we all feel vulnerable, I guess, is why I bring that up.
Well, I think in center city Wichita, the public perception is really the growing homeless problem and a number of people that are living on the street. It just creates a perception of safety, and it just discourages people from enjoying center city and the ability to have. For us to take a more stronger approach, we have to have a place to take people. And we can't take people, in order to make people move, we have to have options legally that we, that we can offer them.
Very good. I have to agree with Commissioner Dennis on some of his comments regarding the jail situation, the bed space needed. Again, if we have no consequences for, if the judges have no place to sentence somebody because there's a lack of bed space, we lose all of the incentives to do anything, really. And I think that having bed space available is, is a key piece to being able to give judges the latitude to do whatever's necessary. I think whether it be juveniles or adults, the incentives have to stay in balance. If you tell someone, there's a sentence as a result of what you've done, but you can take this other program, whether it be diversion or, say, a treatment program of some sort, then you can set aside, if you will, the, the incarceration part of this. That has to be something that's realistic. And right now, a lack of bed space, I think, takes that option off the table entirely. I would argue that the, I was very, actually, was very much a cheerleader for the jail annex. I think it was a great choice for Sedgwick County. In regards to building more bed space, if we were to do that, I do think the numbers have gotten to the point where we ought to take a look at that. I would rather see us take a look at the land, I think we have extra land available around the annex we have today, that that's probably the place we ought to take a look at. And it should be maybe the low-level offender, not the murders and the rapes, but the low-level offender, maybe people, prejudication perhaps, that ought to be housed over there. And if, again, having bed spaces, less cost, I think will save money as a county by not sending so many people out of county. By the way, one thing you didn't, I think you did mention briefly, but it takes a lot of resources, vehicles and staff to transport people back and forth. So again, this is, it's a double hit. Now, we've just paying the bed, the daily rate, we're also paying for staff and overhead costs to transport back and forth. And then they're not available for their attorneys or their court dates or things like that. So there's an awful lot of other expenses I think we have to take a look at that I think would benefit having appropriate bed space here in the county. One of the things I, I, I followed a few cases personally, because I was interested to see how the process works. But there's a couple of folks that were assigned a defense attorney. And I said, have you, so I talked to them. I said, have you talked to your defense attorney? And they said, no. And their, their court date was like tomorrow, okay? The defense attorney met with them literally five minutes before they walked into the courtroom. And I don't think that's a good, it's not an adequate defense. And so the defense attorneys need to be able to engage their clients sooner in the process, rather than right before they walk into the courtroom. Any comments on that?
The issue is one of two things. If they're in custody, taking the time, you know, to go over to the jail and sit down with a client is, is fine, but it takes a lot, it takes an effort. If they're out of custody, getting them into your office ahead of time, again, is a, it takes, takes some effort. Neither which is an impediment. The thing is, for most of them, it's their caseloads. If they have 70 to 80 cases at a time, that may seem like a lot, but that's manageable. If they have 150 plus, that's not. And so also the decentralization of the courts a few years ago has, has added a wrinkle to that in that I may have several judges that I have to appear in front of on a given day, which is certainly manageable, but it, what it requires is, I mean, candidly, what we're, a lot of these issues, what we need is more personnel, it's a staffing issue. If I had, if I had 15, 15 more defense attorneys in town, that issue wouldn't happen, because they'd each have, you know, percentage-wise, that many fewer cases, so they'd have time for more one-on-one contact. If Shelley had more staffing, you know, in the drug department, you know, testing department, the backlog wouldn't be there. So I think that's really the issue there. I don't think anybody's, you're not going to hear any defense attorney defend the practice of meeting with the client beforehand for, you know, even the morning of, for a matter of moments. But when they have, you know, I had one attorney here who had over 180 cases, nearly all of them very serious, you know, all of them felonies and very serious felonies. So we did move heaven and earth to try to help him do his job, whatever he needed. If he needed something, he'd call us. This is defense attorney. We'd help him, make sure he got the discovery. If he, you know, it's, it's a matter of staffing.
Well, one of you said it was a crisis, and I would agree. I think we, I think it almost, it's almost, we're meeting the letter of the law and constitutional duty here, but it's just a letter of the law. We're not really doing the right by the people who deserve to have someone defend them with reasonable understanding what's actually going on. So I am, I am very concerned about that. I'll say.
And I guess to your point, usually the remedy, when, when you have a circumstance like that, you'll have the defendant file a motion, I want to fire my lawyer. And, well, why do you want to fire your lawyer? Well, because he never comes to see me, and the last time I saw him was the day before court. And, okay, well, there's a good reason then to fire the lawyer. The problem is, when the appointment list gets smaller and smaller and smaller, once I say, okay, we're going to take this lawyer off the case, I have, I now have a pool of a very small set of people to backfill that. That's, that's where the crisis really hits. Because once you, once you get out of the public defender's office, then you go to the conflicts office, each, you know, the public defender's office has a lot of people, the conflicts office has smaller numbers. Once the conflicts office goes off, now you're on the private list. And the private list currently is maybe three people that can take level ones and ups.
And how many do each of them have? And then when that happens, then the guy gets his case contained, and he sits in jail another six months, while the new lawyer has to start from scratch and start over. If we had enough defense attorneys, we'd also have fewer people in jail, because they could deal with them sooner. I mean, all of these things have cascading effects on every aspect.
I guess my point is, it's a key piece. You know what I'm saying? So we all just end up, this is a crisis, and has a huge impact on your, on your population. And then at the end of the day, someone spends time in jail for a time they probably shouldn't be in jail, because they deserve, they deserve adjudication opportunities. And at the end of the day, our speed of trial process is just broken because of that issue. So I think it is a crisis. I have three very short questions. I'm sorry I took so much time, but I've waited a long time, too. We've not talked about work release today. And I think our work release resources could be expanded. I think there's people in jail that could theoretically be out safely and be getting experience in the job world and getting their resume back and learning how to transition back into a productive life. I think that's an opportunity that we need to spend some, some thought and maybe expanding that piece of what we do here. Any comments from anybody?
We are ramping back up our work release population. We can hold 165 folks. I think we have 100 there right now. So we are remodeling, we used some ARPA money to remodel the women's dorms, we can take more women. Traditionally, they waited longer to get there. So I agree, but it's been a staffing issue up until now.
Again, I think it's low-hanging fruit. So getting people out of the jail and back into the community safely is, is a goal. I would rather see money to get that to capacity, maybe even expand that piece of what we do here. If we, if there's more bed space needed there, I would rather see that considered as an option here. And then let me, let me talk about the MAP motions, so motions for adult prosecution for juveniles. I understand that went way up from post 367. And I know we, we lost a House bill 2021, we tried to get that to pass. But I'd like to have you guys talk a little bit about your juvenile population. We've not talked about that much today.
Jeff, what, we got five, four kids in the adult?
Four kids in our facility.
So they've been mapped up and they're, they had, turned 18 and they're in the, well, I guess they don't have to turn 18, but they have to have a segregated.
They're under, they're under.
Okay. So those are MAPs, motion for adult prosecution. When there's so few resources in the juvenile system for a kid who commits a murder or, you know, is 17 in a matter of days and has, has gone through every resource in the juvenile system, then we have the option of filing what's called a motion for adult prosecution. There's also a component to that that requires, at least locally, we, our judges are going to want to see mental health examination. They want to know if this kid is, you know, a kid mentally, or if they're 17-year-olds living the lifestyle and an adult. And so it's, it's rarely done in the grand scheme of things, but it's certainly far more often, these motions are filed and sustained than they were pre-367, because pre-367, we had more options. So, you know, in terms of the volume, three in jail right at the moment, four, excuse me, not a huge number, but by gross number, but in terms of percentage year-to-year, it's an uptick. And we told, we told the legislature this was going to be the case. I'll keep kids in juvenile system if I believe that the system is in a position to adequately address the issues that cause them to commit their crimes and can adequately address public safety. But if there's case length limits and things like that, that they're going to be turned loose in 45 days or, you know, whatever, irrespective of how they're doing, I can't look the community in the eye and say, I've, you know, when someone says, why'd you turn him loose? I gotta have a better answer than, because I had to.
Right. I appreciate your testimony on 2021 and on that. I feel like the state needs to learn more about our challenges in Sedgwick County. And I listened to Shelley's, Dr. Stedman's stats on how Sedgwick County is unique amongst the state, I think is very sobering. My final question would be this for Chief Sullivan. You know, it wasn't too long ago, I had an acquaintance who was watching a car get broken into, vandalized, in the middle of the night, so they went out there and got beat up by four perpetrators. Police showed up, didn't even write a report. There's no consequences, no, there's no investigation, no report filed. This person was, suffered significant injuries. And I just think, when that type of thing happens, it's just a, it's anecdotal, but it's like, what, there's something wrong with WPD if they can't write a report when four people beat up a person, well, the car's been broken, broken into in the middle of the night. I don't know what it's going to take to solve that, but I, when that, that type of story gets out there, I'm very concerned. Some people don't feel safe. That's, that's a perfect story, where something's got to change. I don't know what caused that to happen, but that's one of those things where I'd love to give you a chance to respond. When did that happen? About six, eight months ago, perhaps. Probably before you were here, I guess.
Yeah, it happened before I came here. What happens now, it'll be severe discipline, it'll be administered. And that's the difference. When you send a message throughout the department that if an incident like that happens, there will be consequences, and they will be swift and they will be certain. Things like that are less likely to happen. That doesn't mean they won't happen. That just means that if you're, you're aware, God forbid, something like that happens now, you have the ability to send that information to me right away and know that it will be dealt with. And I think that's the difference. I've done a lot to change the disciplinary process within the department, to give it consistency and, and to give it credibility. So I would be desirous to hear that. It's unacceptable, and we take reports about things like that. So, well, let me, let me know if you hear of another story like that right away.
I'll do that. Thank you, and appreciate the chance to speak. I know we're late on time, so I'll stop.
Thank you, Commissioner Stedman. Two quick follow-ups. First of all, I want to thank everyone. This is very valuable. We're just entering into our budget cycle. We'll pass the budget here in August, and we need this kind of feedback. And it all, everything that you discussed today really comes down to funding, and where do we get that funding source from, and, and how do we fit it into our budget? Some of this funding that we need, it has to come from the state, though. We can't do it all ourselves. And one of the reasons we have some much jail overcrowding is because the courts send people back that need evaluation with the state mental hospital. And so we've been advocating for several years for a regional mental health facility, and And everybody says it needs to be done, but the money is hung up somewhere in Topeka right now. $25 million is sitting there someplace in Topeka. I think we need to go back and, and find out what the finance committee is doing on releasing that money so that we can move forward because at a certain point, that money's not going to be very valuable to us because we're not going to have time to build a regional mental health facility for the spender's true. So I task our manager and staff to go back and try and find out where that money is and when we're going to get the 25 million out of the state and when we're going to get the other 15 million from KADAS and see if there's another 15 million in the KADAS budget. So that's really step one. The other portion of it is we have a fantastic regional forensic science center here, but we do a lot of things that the state would be normally doing. And we, we had a nice lunch and, or dinner, rather, with Dr. Stedman and the sheriff and the DA, talking about funding coming out of KBI that can help support our regional forensic science center here. And honestly, I probably should have known that before the dinner that night, but he has to submit his budget before the legislature starts. And, and so it was already submitted. It was too late for this year for us to get any funding. But it's not too late for us to get any funding out of the state for next year. So what we need to do is get our staff again to work with Tony Mativi up there at the state level to see if he can include some additional funding in his budget for the next cycle. And I don't want it to fall through the cracks. So I'm bringing it up now so that we can get some KBI funding here to do some of the things that we're doing with our regional mental health facility that is really a state responsibility. So again, thank you all. I appreciate your, your time today.
Okay. Thank you. Tom, did you have anything else yet? Or questions? I got a couple of comments, but other than that.
Well, just to close, historically, the county, early 2000s created Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. You've heard today, there is nobody in here that's satisfied, zero. And, and this is not going to be solved in a two-hour meeting. This is a battle right now that we have to address and stay on and focus. And some of it's legislative in nature potentially, a lot of it's budget-related and it's not going to be solved in a, in a cycle. I, I would propose, I would love to take a look and like sit down and talk with Mark and Jeff about it more and Judge, retooling CJCC to become, and, and make that table grow a little bit.
Right. I agree.
Retool that to be the group that stays on point on this issue because we all get busy. We all have work.
Right.
But stay on this, on point, in focus, to talk about everything from wraparound services to how we're dealing with street crime and, and report occasionally to elected officials in county and Wichita, Derby and, and other cities. So I'll throw that out there. I think that becomes a work in progress. I'll talk offline with the sheriff and DA and Judge and we'll see what we can stand.
Great idea. Obviously, huge thanks has been said. A couple of minor things. Chief Joe, I, I think I've been involved a little more active in this homeless deal, which has got a lot of pressure around it. But the continuum, continuum of care group seems to be delivering some data that's tangible. I think they're making some progress. Intent is to get them into a living place, right? You're kind of there with that and if that's.
Yeah, 100%. I mean, I think our. 100%. I'm very happy with the work that the hot team is doing. Wish I could expand it.
Absolutely.
And very happy with the support that they're getting. But we are seeing an uptick in the, the encampments and we're actually, the city is looking for alternate ways to finance that because the contract we have is just too expensive to deal with the volume.
Right.
The other thing I would bring up is I, I think both the city and the council and the county, I think we're both kind of, could speed up the process of getting those additional mobile teams, multidisciplinary mobile teams out on the street. And that would be a huge help. We're, we're still responding to a lot of radio calls that it's not, it's not in anyone's best interest to send, to send law enforcement. And they could be much better addressed by those teams.
And I think the city and county, I think they're okay with the financing of that. I think we've had some staffing challenges to increase that to.
Yeah, I think it's hung up in both our legal departments as well.
Okay. Well, it's.
But it'd be great to see them out on the streets soon. They, they would, they would have a huge impact, I believe.
Okay. And then my second thing, thanks for your comments. Mark, I, I think and all of you need to realize that I know what, you did a great job with the DAs of the state, maybe the judges back when the meth problem was going on. And we, we made some statewide progress on that, thanks to your lead and I think Jeff was involved too, also with the metal, metal theft legislation that even though we try to stop it here, they go to Butler County. So we do have some element of success doing statewide recognition and solving it statewide, at least get it pushed down to Oklahoma instead of up here. But so I, I just say that thinking that as we get into, as we get into what you all need that says we got to, we've had a lot of state discussion, just know that I personally, and I think the county commission in general is very supportive of whatever role we need to play to help push issues through at the state level. I know Commissioner Howell spends a lot of time up there. He knows the process, how to navigate pretty well. So as you all, between judges, DAs, juveniles, Shelley, your group, all of the, all the stuff that we have, just know that I think I stand ready and we stand ready to do, to play our role. You're the experts and sometimes I just showed up at some meetings to, to help cheerlead and support, but that's what we can do if we get with the, the city, city council, the mayors to play a role, if that needs to happen as well. But it's very important for our community. So I want to thank you all tremendously. This has been great. I love the idea of what Tom has about creating that, recreating that, engaging that group. I know the Crime Commission does a decent job of supporting everything that you all have been talking about. So with that, we're coming up to, Rusty, you got something? Here we go. Rusty's our expert in a lot of these departments.
I just want to, very briefly, I just want to, I want to make clear in this conversation what we've heard from that end of the table. The county years ago made commitments to provide forensic science in, in the county because based on the needs of the sheriff, based on the needs of the city of Wichita, which is the biggest in the state and, and produces half the homicides in the state. Also made the same commitment to provide 911 service to, at this point, I think 31 agencies across the county.
Right.
Something that we hear consistently is expectations and needs of these consumers of our products. Dr. Stedman and Alora both are very creative in, in the way that they work to try to meet the needs of the various departments. Derby's needs are different than Wichita's, just as Park City and Hayesville's are different than Wichita's. And they adapt, Alora specifically is adapting to serve 31 different fire, EMS and police departments, effectively with the resources she has, vast amounts of overtime. And Dr. Stedman and her staff are very creative and very innovative in ways to try to manage backlogs in order to get stuff pushed out to the DA, pushed out for PD on their human performance testing cases. I just think it's important, as we ask for the KBI support for money, the KBI director works for the attorney general who's elected. We have to have the attorney general on board and lobbying the, the secretary for the Department of Corrections to support community corrections, asked for money has been unsuccessful. That was a direct, that had to go, that had to go directly to the legislature. So as we work with the KBI on funding, the new director may be willing to support that, but I think we have to have the support of the attorney general and certain legislators if we're going to get money to support Shelley's operation, to enhance services, to, to meet the needs of Wichita PD and others. So I just want to make that connect that.
That's helpful.
They are doing excellent work, the best they can with the resources they have. The expectations from other departments as they grow, as our municipalities grow and their expectations change, we're trying to keep up with that. And so they, they fall under a lot of pressure to try to meet the expectations of others based on the commitment of the county to provide those services countywide. So I just want to point that out as we close here that everybody's on the same page. We're working for the same reason. We want to, we want the same results. I just don't want the infighting and the Facebook, negative Facebook posts from individual departments.
Sure.
I'd rather have these kind of conversations that are productive, that give you guys a better picture and get us all on the same page. So with that, that's all I have to say.
Well, we're, we're blessed as a city and a county that we're still growing in population, growing in economic tools. There's 105 counties and 100 of them would probably love to have the growth that, that we're experiencing. With that comes the support and the, and the curse of courts and 911 and all these things. So we recognize that, but we can't, we can't stop and slow down. We have to support this. So any other comments of fantastic comments? All right. Then, okay, well, we're up against the 11 o'clock hour. So thank you, everybody, again. Very helpful.